I wonder if everyone can take their seats real quickly, we're going to start in about 20 seconds. Thank you. I'm going to call the meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. I wonder if everyone stands for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Lawer.
Here.
Alderman Sage.
Here.
Alderman Mewa Lamwe.
Here.
Alderman Sterns.
Here.
Alderman McDade.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Black.
Here.
Alderman Fazini.
Here.
Alderman Fruen.
Here.
Mayor Renner.
Here. Thank you very much. We're going to actually go ahead and start with public comment. We have three people who have asked to speak and our typical time limit is three minutes. So if you could keep your remarks to three minutes, we'd certainly appreciate it. I'm going to start with Mr. Phil Bowles. I wonder if you could come forward and again state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Phil Bowles. I live at One Palm Court in Bloomington. I own Muggsy's Pub on North Main Street. I'm the president of the Main Street Association. I'm here this evening in opposition to the resolution of commitment via council signatures for the November 2013 downtown strategy. This is a plan that evidently has only been available to review for a couple of weeks. My opposition concerns the issue of form-based code which reportedly has been removed. I really do wish that that statement were true, but it is not. In reviewing and comparing this plan to the previously released downtown strategy February 24th of 2010, for the public record, I'd like to state that the cover is the same, the pictures, illustrations, charts are the same, many of the pages are identical. Although two little words "form-based" have been removed, the concept is the same. Specifically, let me bring your attention to a chart on page 65 that states, "Adopt a zoning code overlay that captures the scale and character of historic downtown Bloomington buildings and provides appropriate parameters for new development." A zoning code overlay. What zoning code overlay? Either this zoning code overlay is indeed the form-based code or a like product of recent code definition changes to affect the same outcome. Maybe it refers to page 39, which is the S4 district, which seems to also include the couplet that is designed for form-based code zoning as referred to in the Main Street Call for Investment Plan. Or quite possibly a whole new zoning code overlay yet to be announced. There are other examples to support my case, but I don't have three minutes here. Although a bit later, the agenda notes that a 30-minute presentation to sell you on this new plan. With ample advanced warning, this person might have a PowerPoint presentation or some other equally impressive presentation. I believe that the council should be afforded more time to review and more fully understand documents of such length and technicalities so that it can better represent the citizens as opposed to this particular slam dunk procedure. Therefore, I'm asking that the vote on this resolution be tabled for now as it is clearly understood, that one signature of endorsement may serve as your commitment. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to let everyone know that the policy of public comment is that we don't make comments to respond at the time. So, Mr. Elton Franklin, would you come forward? Now, I know you know the rules, so...
My name's Elton Franklin. I live at 508 Patterson Drive here in Bloomington, Illinois. A few things on my mind. One of the things that jumped out at me, and there are very few people that I think admire Mr. Mandela as much as I do. He was a remarkable man. He did amazing things. But simple point in fact, I don't believe that the American flag should be lowered even in honor of somebody as great as Mr. Mandela. He's not an American citizen. That's an American flag. That's all I'll say on it. Coming to matters more immediate, to echo a certain portion of the previous person who was up here, if it walks like a duck and quacks like a duck, you can call it a goose all you want to. Simple point in fact is, there have been a few tweaks, and minor tweaks at that. I was stunned and I must say gratified with Alderman McDade and Alderman Sage's entries in the question and answers for the council meeting. I think they brought up some very salient points that I think need to be addressed, and I would concur and I would add my voice in agreement and in recommending that this be tabled until such time as more thought can be given to it and we can see something that does not change a name and the song still stays the same. One last thing, there's been a lot of talk about changing the way that we have our representation set up. And I will say, it was somewhat, I don't know, it was confusing, but at the same time, there was a little bit of light to it in that a person mentioned that they stepped out the door, they became a private citizen. Well, I've got news for you folks. If you haven't already figured it out, you were elected to represent the people. That makes you a private citizen. However, you are placed in an area where you have a substantial amount of influence, and as such, it ill behooves you to utilize that status for a personal agenda. I don't believe it's appropriate to say, "We're going to add 50% count to an alderman's, 50% more citizens to an alderman's representation, and then cut three loose on the street." To do as they damn well please and say what they want to because it's in the best interest of the city as a whole. I believe that that's what we've got in our mayor, and I think that the one that we've got serves that purpose well, and I thank you for your service. That's really all I have to say.
Perfect timing.
I do appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks. And last but not least, Mr. Bruce Meeks.
Bruce Meeks, 1402 Wright Street, Bloomington, Illinois. Mayor, if sorry, can I hand this to the clerk so she can give you the copies of what I'm referring to?
I don't see why that's a problem. Thank you.
There he has one. I ran into him. About a year ago, what I've called the experiment of the subcommittees occurred, started December 2012. I put together a summary report, I've also put together a more detailed report, that as you know, I've moved it to the State's Attorney's Office of McLean County for review to get clarity if misconduct has occurred by this council and the previous council. I want to tell you, I'm not happy that I did that, but I see I have no choice because, as many of you know, I think there's about three of us in this council chambers as citizens that have not missed very many meetings in the last two years. I happen to be one of them. So I'll go over the report very quickly. The existence of the committees lasted nine months. Originally stated that they were going to last six months with a review, which did not occur. The number of meetings that were available on the calendar were 29. The number of meetings that did not occur were five. That's 17% did not occur. Meetings called at order by the city manager was six, and that's 20%. Meetings called at order by the city manager with both or either the mayor or the mayor pro tem present at the meeting was four, 13.79%. The number of times that the Chapter 2, Section 17, which is talking about the public comment that I'm participating in tonight, occurred five times, 17.24%. The number of times that the cards that we filled out this evening were made available was zero. The number of times attendance by four members of the council, five, 17.24%. Number of times attendance of three members of the council, 13, 44.83%. Number of times attendance of two members of the council, which was not a quorum, five, 17.4%. The number of meetings found in violation of the Open Meetings Act to date that we know of is one. And to me, if you violate the state law of Illinois, which is the Open Meetings Act, in a literal translation of Chapter 2, Section 10 of the City Code of Bloomington, violations of the code, any officer violating any provision of this code shall be deemed guilty of misconduct in office and liable for removal therefore. That's all serious. The Open Meetings Act, the City Code, should be to all of you. I won't go into the rules of the other rules that should be followed, but they were, for the most part, as you can see, they were not followed. Thank you.
Thank you. I will breach protocol slightly. The only one informational point I'll make is just that the committee system, if you don't know, has been disbanded. All right, move forward. We're going to go to appointments and recognitions. I wonder if I might be able to ask these people if they are here to stand. Brad Williams from the Historic Preservation Commission. Brad, are you here? Mark Fetzer, Property Maintenance Review Board. Jeffrey Brown and Douglas Dodson, Building Board of Review. Okay? They are not here this evening, but they are on the consent agenda. Moving along to the consent agenda. Are there any items that any members of the city council would like to see removed from the consent agenda? Alderman Fruen.
Mayor, I suspended this the last couple of meetings, but kind of feel it's appropriate for me to read it again in light of some developments, but as I have in the past, I'd like to say that for the consent and regular agenda, I do not have any personal or business interest in any of the listed items, nor have I received any financial benefits from any of the parties or organizations referenced in these specific agenda items.
Right. Thank you. Alderman Fazini. I'd move that we accept the consent agenda. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Alderman Schmidt. Essentially, let me start my voting here. I'm going to turn to Alderman Schmidt again. A vote. Start. Did I do it? No? Ah, okay, there we go. Sorry. Start vote. Okay. Okay, everybody can vote now, sorry. I am educable, it just takes a while. Jody? Okay. Sorry. Okay. And we have, oh, I have to display the results? There we go. Right, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving right along, we have item 8A, approval of the 2013 tax levy, the amount of $23,219,066. And we have allocated approximately 10 minutes. I do want to just say as a very brief comment that regardless of perhaps some of the difficulties in funding that the city might face, we have, as a council, at this point unanimously decided that we want to hold the line on property taxes for all kinds of reasons. We don't think that they're a good source of revenue. Only 14% of the city's budget comes from property taxes, but we want to keep ourselves non-reliant on them. And also, approximately the same percentage, about 14%, of what you pay in property taxes comes to us, just as an informational point. Is there a motion to approve this recommendation? Moved by Alderman Fazini. Is there a second? Yes. Second by Alderman Schmidt? Okay. Discussion. Who'd like to speak? Okay. Seeing no discussion, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Excuse me, I'm sorry. That's... Okay, well, never mind. I guess maybe I'm not educable. Smack myself. Okay. Motion carries 9-0. Thank you. Moving right along, solid waste program and text amendment to Chapter 1, that is refuse. Is there, so we've got 30 minutes, and I know we've been dealing with this for quite a while, but I won't be terribly draconian, but I'm going to try to keep us close to 30 minutes, depending on who wants to speak to this. First of all, is there a motion to approve this? So moved by Alderman Black. Is there a second?
A second.
A second by Alderman Schmidt. Who'd like to speak? And then I'll go ahead and begin to see who'd like to speak to this. Alderman Sage? Let me get a kind of a sense of who'd like to speak at least upfront.
Probably not commenting yet specifically, Mayor, but just a question. The original staff recommendation that came to us a couple of meetings ago presented a three-year phased-in price increase, and the latest iteration does not have that. And so I think I've spoken publicly, I've got some concerns about that, the reason being that we have, over the years, kind of had a tendency to try to address situations where I don't think fees have been monitored and adjusted accordingly. And we try to do it all in one bite, so to speak, to recoup the fees. And so, for me, I guess it comes down to an issue more of respect to our citizens, that we give them the opportunity to, with a phased-in fee approach, to kind of ease in to the payment increases and allow them to plan a little bit more. I know I mentioned something that I mentioned to Kevin here when we were talking the other day. You know, some folks just aren't going to get the kind of raises and have the type of extra money to perhaps be able to jump from, you know, $9 a month in some situations. And so my concern is to try to give folks an opportunity to ease into that. I mean, I'm willing to support the fees as presented. What I would very much like to see is a phased-in approach, a three-year approach similar to what staff originally brought us. I apologize, I guess that was a question and a comment.
If I could just clarify, and then Alderman Black and Schmidt can weigh in. As we were reconsidering this and then kind of each touching base with Alderman, we wanted to, the principle was we wanted to have something that frankly, we could all live with, not necessarily something any of us liked, and we wanted to try to close that gap. And there were several principles that we were guided. We pretty much wanted to leave the service intact, and if you don't have a copy of this, this is kind of a summary of it, and there are some at the very end. So basically, we left bulk waste almost intact. Bulk waste, now it's every week. You'd pay 25 for the second scoop rather than the third scoop. And brush, we didn't, and leaf, we didn't touch. Basically, we're keeping the same subsidy, or excuse me, the same service. The subsidy changed. So the, if I can clarify, these aren't dollar amounts that are chosen out of the air. The 25 came from, that's about what it costs. So essentially, the logic would be, if you have to have a 95-gallon can, the general fund isn't going to subsidize you. If you can live with 16, you don't pay anymore, and we'll be happy to give you another recycle bin if that helps you to live within your, you know, within the $16. And then in the middle was the 21. So that was where those came from. I think the reason why, and again, Alderman Schmidt and Black can weigh in on this, that there wasn't a graduated schedule is because we wanted to make sure that we had a proposal that would incentivize recycling. And so we thought if, oh, if you went from 16 to 19 to 25, you know, three bucks, maybe I'll go ahead and get the larger can. That was literally the, I think, the nature of our discussion. Anybody want to add to that? But this is, I mean, you've hit on something that's really critical, so I thank you for that. Alderman Black?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I think that's a pretty fair assessment of where we were at. To be clear, when we talk about the different cart sizes, we're definitely trying to incentivize recycling and producing less waste. And in that conversation that we had had, you know, we didn't see a clear path of how can we charge, you know, this one, one year to this next year to that next year. I wanted to be as clear as crystal for this. So looking forward over the next three fiscal years, it'll be very clear to citizens saying the cart you choose corresponds with what you pay.
Alderman Schmidt?
And I think one other principle that went into my thinking at least is that for the people who were, that I heard be most concerned about rising costs, were the people who really live on fixed incomes and probably are the people who are going to have the 35-gallon cart, and keeping that at $16 and never raising it so that that's a stable cost was important to me. I get what you're saying about being able to plan ahead, but it, and I could be persuaded for an amendment if Alderman Black could be, because I do understand what you're saying. I was really interested in that bottom-line principle there.
And I think if I could clarify, just to clarify for the audience, the original proposal that in a sense that we were reacting to eventually would even increase to 16 gallons. So in other words, we wanted to keep an option so that citizens could stay at $16 and be reasonably certain that that wasn't going to increase. I'm sorry.
So then, just as, and I appreciate your comments, Scott, but wouldn't a three-year phased-in approach also create that same line of sight for people to know what they were going to be paying every year?
Conceivably, and that's why I wouldn't be too opposed to come in with a different structure for pay scales.
Alderman Fazini?
Different subject. Philosophically, we have automated equipment, and we have one driver instead of three drivers, and yet we're putting stickers on bags, which means the driver's going to have to get out of the truck, and it isn't, no longer going to be automated. I don't, philosophically, that doesn't match for me, so I'd be against that. If that were the only problem in the whole thing, I would vote for this, but I am against that.
Just to clarify the logic, if I might, initially, we did not, had not included stickers, and then as we went to kind of the second and third phase of drafting, redrafting, we did receive feedback, particularly over Thanksgiving, many people said, "Hey, I can live with 35-gallons throughout most of the year, but there are times if I've got a family reunion or Thanksgiving or maybe Christmas, I may need to throw out a couple more bags, and so I'd like to have that." And it does incorporate a little bit more of an overt pay-as-you-throw concept to the system. So that was the logic for it. But you're right, I'm sure, you know, Jim Karch would agree that it would, it's going to slow down some of this. It's not, probably with still have one person per truck, it's just going to slow down the delivery a little bit. Okay. Well, let me see, who, Alderman Sage, are you, or Alderman Lawer? Excuse me.
Just like, just a moment, Mayor. I'm a bit troubled because we don't have a lot of areas really highly defined here, and I understand that, you know, the intent may be that we come back and revisit this, and we've discussed that, but we don't really have, to my knowledge, a real good history of coming back and changing these ordinances after we've got a little experience with it. So I would just like to go on the record, the intent here, if I am to vote yes, is that we need to come back in six months and revisit this and at least have this discussion again and see how our citizens are handling what we have done here. One of the things that David and I did discuss was a phased-in approach. I think that probably is a good idea. I'm very concerned about how we're going to service our customers downtown. I'm also concerned with what we're going to do with our apartment dwellers. We haven't devised a plan for that yet. It's been brought to my attention, there are a number of businesses in town that would like to be included in our recycling plan, and we could actually capitalize on that. Okay? And I'm also very concerned about our elderly and handicapped. I'm kind of partially, temporarily at least, I hope, handicapped in the fact that I don't think that if I had a 95-gallon can for the last two or three months, I could have gotten that to the curb myself. And I have several constituents that have voiced that opinion as well, and they're permanently handicapped or aged and unable to make that transition. One of the other ideas that's been posed that I don't think that we've talked about is that we can also allow our system to be somewhat more workable and save a little bit of money if we could schedule this so that we're able to put all the containers on one side of the street, and therefore we don't have the truck pass up and down each street both ways.
That might be worse than the problem of the 95-gallon now.
It might, but there again, I mean, if you really want to save money on some of this stuff, having that truck do half of the, half of the distance would really capitalize on...
If I may make a comment on one of your earlier points, certainly there is, it's very difficult to have any kind of recycling downtown, and I had an earlier discussion and commitment to Alderman Sterns and to Alderman Schmidt. I had asked them, I said, you know, after, regardless of what happens here, what version of this we would pass tonight, would they continue to work with me on having recycling and apartments and to try to deal with that as well as we move forward? Because that's an issue I hear of, whether it's perhaps recycling, have some containers in downtown a little bit similar to what they have in uptown, have some recycling containers at the Coliseum, have other, deal with apartments and other issues. And I think they, without speaking out of school, I think they've both given me an agreement, and I made a commitment to Alderman Sterns that we'd do that. Alderman Milowamway, and then Alderman Schmidt, and then Alderman Fruen, and then if there's an alternative motion, substitute motion, I'll entertain that at that time. Alderman Milowamway.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I think I might be one of the few who's actually happy that the conversation has taken such a long time, because in that process, I believe that we've learned quite a bit, and it has given a chance to everyone in the city to tune in and weigh in on the situation. I think it is, I would say that it's, it's a very, losing my words at the moment. Well, we're not going to make everybody happy with this particular situation, whatever vote we choose. Initially, I had some concerns about the 95-gallon cart and jumping to such a big increase, more than 50%. As you know, I have a large family, but this is not about me. But I'm thinking about, you know, there are a couple of families around the corner from me who have, I know some have four, others five and six. So producing waste at some point is not necessarily a function of them being wasteful, but it's just a function of having large numbers. So I was a little worried about penalizing those individuals just because they have a large family. If you know anything about Europe, for example, you have to be very careful about policies that you put in place that make it more expensive for folks to live in a particular place. So to me, that was one of the initial concerns that I had about that. So if we were able to phase that in and you were open to that amendment, I think that'd be great. The other thing too that I'm thinking about is the possible... The other thing, too, that I'm thinking about is the possible, the increases that not necessarily Bloomington is considering, but other entities are considering as well. So when you put all of those together, it makes the situation a little bit less tenable for people. So I'm an advocate of people being able to, to at least get used to the change and plan, and let them know what's coming ahead. The other thing about the ninety-five gallon carts, I think the number we're expecting, you know, I think it's, to me, seems like it's speculative, you know, fifteen thousand. So I don't know what would happen if we don't get fifteen thousand households to choose that cart, you know, what is that going to do to the bottom line of what we're trying to achieve? So that's something to consider. And the last thing I would say, I also had the same concern that Alderman Fazini had about the automation and the three-dollar stickers. To me, just feels like it's just an added burden to the way staff would do their work. But I would say for the sake of moving things forward, I think I'm willing to compromise this, and once we see what our experience is after a year, maybe we'll be able to make some changes. Thank you.
Again, Alderwoman Schmidt, at Fruen, and then I will entertain a motion, or substitute motion if there is one.
First of all, I'd like to, a second what Alderman Lauer said about looking in at this, however we end up here in six months. This is really important that we do that follow-up and really get some feedback. I had a couple of questions that I was hoping David could answer. I heard from somebody today who read our ordinance very carefully, who thinks it says a couple of things, and in one case, I know specifically why he says that. Section 301.7 says that you pay in the amount of three dollars, in the amount of three dollars to pay for overflow bags of refuse set out. And he was asking me, so is this three dollars for however many bags I want to put out, or is it three dollars a bag? Obviously, I think our intention is three dollars per bag. If we could tighten that up to make that clear?
Let me ask Rosalie Dodson to come forward, and she's our Assistant Corporate Counsel, and ask her, it may be that we want to just keep that singular. Certainly, the intent is that it would be three dollars per bag. If you have 301.7, Rosalie, do you think there's a need for?
Yeah, right.
It's per bag.
You're right. So that's not what it says, though. It says for overflow bags, and so I think he was being hopeful and interpreting it that he could get a, you know, a thirty-five gallon and then just pay three bucks and have five bags to trash.
So I think if we put the word each there and then eliminated the plural, is that, would that do it, Rosalie?
Yeah.
Amount of three dollars per bag?
Per bag, and.
Or just per bag, yeah.
Right. Or whatever that amount may end up being. Also, I think there, I've heard this from more than one person, that there is an understanding that if you go with, say, a thirty-five gallon can, you can get as many as you want for sixteen dollars. And I, I'm not reading that in there, but maybe if we could reread that very carefully with that interpretation in mind.
Well, I think part of it is also the policy, you get, they get one garbage, one refuse can, but they can get a second recycle can.
Right, but because I've heard this two or three times, I maybe just reread that. And then I'm, you know, we had originally talked about understanding that the bulk waste producers are often not, you know, the basic residents. I think we've received emails from people saying, how many couches do we all throw out every year? And so, our initial proposal was that it was going to be every other week, and now we're going back to every week. And yet, I hear that that's probably one of our more costly services. So I'm trying to understand why we're back to doing this every week, and why that's cost-effective for us at the city. If you could talk about that a little bit.
Well, as you've seen in the staff backup report, as we went back and especially talked with our Public Works Director and our Solid Waste Supervisor, it was their belief, based upon actual experience in dealing with this day in and day out, that it really would be, they just could not foresee that there would be cost savings, or significant cost savings, every other week. And it's mainly because their experience. Now, certainly, there could be some additional analysis done, but based upon the volume of bulk waste that they pick up on a weekly basis, and trying to speculate on what that would mean if they pick it up every other week, and the increase in volume, and the need for manpower, vehicles, equipment, they just saw from an operational standpoint, it would not generate the kind of savings maybe the council had maybe speculated themselves. So again, we're going back to those people that are dealing with it, living with it, day in and day out. We haven't been able to kind of analyze that with anything but taking their opinion at that time. But it was a significant enough statement and opinion, we wanted to come back and really say, before we change that, again, this is their strong opinion, if you really want to switch that, we probably ought to do some more analysis, rather than make the change now, given the operational concerns.
I just don't want to, in the long run, I don't want to dismiss the opinions that we've heard from many people, that those folks who are really generating the bulk waste should be paying for it, and, you know, instead of normalizing it across all citizens. And I happen to agree with them, and I hope that we continue to look at that.
And I would just say, that's why the staff's original recommendation was twenty-five dollars per load, no freebie. Because that truly, we believe, you know, gets more of that philosophy, those who generate the bulk waste pays for it, and there's the added incentive, if you have to pay for every bolt, you don't just put out small items every week, every couple of weeks, adding to our fix and variable costs. So again, that was some of our rationale for not going with one, what is it, two-point-five cubic loads, and as you saw by the diagrams, one free bucket load is a large amount of material to pick up, hence, you know, part of that very expensive cost of the program.
And just to clarify, I believe, if it's fair to say that in my discussion, at least with Alderwoman Sterns, about, you know, kind of the things we can take on next in the committee that I've kind of nudged you to, or informal group to work with me on, we would certainly be looking at that, too. Yeah, so I mean, that's not, it's not like speak now or forever hold your peace. Alderman Fruen, and then I would, again, I'll entertain a substantive motion.
Mayor, I'll try to keep my comments brief. I think they're consistent with what I've said in the past. There will be some reputation of what others have said that I think's important, but if I have, I hope this passes, we've all been at this a long time, staff and ourselves, so I hope this passes in some form tonight, regardless of what side I'm on. I think if it came down to one thing for me, is what I am very concerned about are the differences we're creating in the community. And I think differences bring divide. And I just think for a basic service like this, that we should not be differentiating our community residents. As an illustration of that, under this proposal, those that may choose a ninety-five gallon cart will see their monthly rate go up more than fifty percent. If you go to twenty-five dollars a month, that's going up more than fifty percent. So I think that's that divide that is concerning to me. Very quickly, I think the three-dollar sticker concept is contrary to our strategic planning of automation. I see that as adding administrative work. I'm a little bit concerned with the projection that's on page three of our packet tonight that talks about the forecast based on how the carts be distributed, with fifteen thousand of the twenty-five thousand being allocated to the ninety-five gallon carts. Others are a lot more knowledgeable about how this selection process will work than I am, but I see people making their decision based on monthly charge and not by size. I think when you give people the option, do you want to pay sixteen dollars a month, or do you want to pay twenty-five dollars a month, you're going to see people cramming in as much as they can into a thirty-five gallon cart. I'm also concerned with the comments that have been said about continuing the weekly bulk pickup. We know how costly that is, and that's one of the things we've all kind of concurred with. And finally, I'm totally on board with everybody else that wants to hold cost, but that does slow down our strategic plan of making this an enterprise fund that pays for itself. And so I think comments are well taken, that at what point do we want to reach that stage where it pays for itself? Let's find out what that forecast is, and let's go with it. But all this is going to do is delay some of those added costs, those added revenues we need for other things, and we're going to be back here at the table in a month or two months, talking about another revenue source to help the general fund. So, everybody's put a lot of work into this, there's no, none of us are going to agree totally on what is the right fix, and so I do hope that in some form it does pass tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Black, you were doing some numbers that Alderman Sage might be okay with, or did you have some numbers? Oh, okay, go ahead.
Okay. In that case, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make an alternative motion with, based on the conversation that we're having right now, so bear with me here. So for fiscal year fifteen, which would be the first year that we're talking about, this would have, thirty-five gallon cart would be sixteen dollars, the sixty-five gallon cart would be eighteen dollars, the ninety-five gallon cart would be twenty dollars. Fiscal year sixteen, again, the thirty-five gallon cart would be sixteen dollars, we're holding that steady, sixty-five gallon cart would increase to twenty dollars, and the ninety-five gallon cart would go to ninety, excuse me, twenty-three dollars. For seventeen, again, thirty-five gallon cart, sixteen dollars, the sixty-five gallon cart, twenty-one dollars, and ninety-five gallon cart, twenty-five dollars, creating that line of sight that we're talking about. And then also, I want to add in the, for the amendment to include three dollars per bag of refuse.
So we make that, we make that clear. Is there a second to the substitute motion? Could I just ask, thanks, thank you, Mayor. Just one more time, just for the sake of everybody here.
Sure.
What is, what do you see as the fee schedule for, again?
Yes, okay, starting from the top?
Don't forget the thirty-five gallon, that stays the same, right?
Okay, so sixty-five would be eighteen, to twenty, to twenty-one. The ninety-five gallon would be twenty, to twenty-three, to twenty-five.
Yeah, thank you. And were you asking for a second?
I was asking for a second.
And procedurally, do we have to do something with the other motion that's on the table?
No, not if there's a substitute motion.
Then I will second, I will second that motion. Second that motion, okay. Is there discussion on the substitute motion, and who'd like to speak? Alderwoman Sterns, I guess you have the floor.
Thank you. We talked earlier about the small apartment buildings scattered throughout the inner city and agreed that we would talk more. Is that correct, Mayor?
Yes, and actually, a little more formally than talk more, I think we had kind of an informal agreement that you and Karen and I would work together on this issue.
And that's, and that I think is welcome, welcome news, because one thing we haven't clarified, for instance, and now especially that we have a proposed fee schedule, is the, say, the duplex. Would it pay two times the smallest cart? You know, we're, they're paying per unit, or would it pay, if it got a larger cart, would it pay two times that unit? Or would it, would there be a basic? I mean, how would that work?
Well, again, at this point, those fees, right, won't change, that is, right now, if somebody has to pay sixteen dollars times two, they'll still pay sixteen dollars times two.
Okay, even if.
But we may possibly, depending on how quickly we work, we might come up with something else by next year, or by the summer, maybe.
So they would pay the sixteen times two or times four? But I wonder just, do you think they could have like a ninety-five gallon cart, if they're paying sixteen times two?
So, if, may I, this is something that we had talked about, I spoke to a couple different Alderman about. The discussion became, it's per unit, not per dwelling. So you, it would discourage the practice of, like, let's say your neighbor, you know, you wouldn't want to put your garbage in your neighbor's can, it's the same kind of principle there, and there's an administrative burden on combining them. So the theory being that each unit belongs to a specific can, so they can conceivably, if they don't want their fees to go up, take a thirty-five gallon cart for each one of their units.
And then beginning to go, I think it's safe to say, beginning to go down that path was something that we thought would be really complicated, which is why I, when we talked earlier, I thought, hey, you know, there are definitely some other issues out there that we could collapse together, recycling apartments, recycling downtown, et cetera. Thanks, okay? If there aren't any other comments? Oh.
Can we just reiterate?
Yes, oh, please. If you, since you've got the numbers there, this is the schedule that you have there, but it makes it clear that it's per bag, three dollars per bag, and it makes it.
What, the schedule being thirty-five?
We know sixteen is the same.
Sixteen's the same across the board. The sixty-five would go to eighteen, to twenty, to twenty-one. And the ninety-five would go from twenty, to twenty-three, to twenty-five.
Okay, thank you. Actually, screen. Yes, vote is in favor of the substitute motion. Thank you. Okay? Jennifer? Okay? Okay? We have eight, and Madam Clerk, you don't identify the one?
Alone nay is Alderman Fruen.
Okay, thank you very much.
In the spirit of unity, if I can change that vote, I'd be happy to. I've already expressed my opinion, but in the sake of unity, if that's possible, I'll do that. It doesn't matter to me.
Does it legally, can we do this after we voted? I don't think we can at this point, but we appreciate the unity.
That's fine.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Okay, support it completely going forward. Okay, thanks. Okay. Moving right along to something else. We have item eight C is a downtown Bloomington strategy, and that the downtown, the recommendations that the staff at the downtown Bloomington strategy be accepted and resolution adopted. I'll just make a couple of comments, because there were some comments beforehand, and also from the open house. There was, let's make clear, this downtown plan started six years ago, and it goes from well over a year of citizen stakeholders, others, investors work in downtown Bloomington. And again, a plan, there's a lot of stuff in a plan that people would not agree with. There's a lot of stuff, frankly, in the pan, plan that I don't agree with. But this came out of, in a sense, the essence of direct democracy, the people who are involved, stakeholders, that many of them were frustrated that this sat on the shelf for four and a half years and didn't, was not acted upon. We have had lots of public discussions about this, not every mayoral open house, but about, just about every other mayoral open house. This became a subject of discussion over the last seven months. I spoke to the Downtown Bloomington Association at least once on this, the downtown bar owners a couple of times, the downtown business owners, and obviously, many times to the Chamber of Commerce, to the Kiwanis, to the Rotary. So certainly, this is something that has been in the public domain and discussion for a very, very long time. And so I think that's the only preparatory mark that I would make at this point. Oh, yes, we did have some questions, one set of questions about someone who came to the open house. There are pictures that were proposed, that are pictures that were developed from the gaming sessions about downtown and what it might look like. The references to foreign-based code, regardless of how people feel about it, were overtly removed. There is a gap neighborhood that decided on their own to have foreign-based code, and so it was essential for our plan to note that any changes that we might make in our downtown that are adjacent to that gap neighborhood include some reference to the foreign-based code. It's not the means by which we'd achieve what's downtown, it is a recognition that one of the neighborhoods, and there are thousands throughout the country that have some form of foreign-based code, that it, older neighborhoods that decide that's what they want. But there is one neighborhood adjacent to downtown that has that. So if there are any changes in zoning that we have, that would need to be overlaid upon what already exists. So just to clarify those comments, at this point, we have budgeted thirty minutes, I won't count my time, my blabbing on that. So I'd like to see who'd like to speak on the downtown.
Do you want a motion first?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, could I have a motion to approve?
I would like to make a motion that we accept the downtown Bloomington strategy.
Moved by Alderwoman Schmidt, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman McDade. Discussion, again, I'd like to see who'd like to speak, and then I'll allocate the time accordingly.
I'll take a stab at it, first if you'd like me to.
And Schmidt? Alderman Lauer, Schmidt, and Sage, and Sterns. And Schmidt. Alderman Lauer, Schmidt, and Sage. And Sterns. Okay. Um, so I don't have to be too terribly draconian. Let's say, you know, aim for about three minutes. And I will start with, um, Alderwoman Schmidt and then go to Alderman Lauer.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I will probably just tag along to many of the things that you said, Mayor Renner. This has been sitting here for quite a long time. This comes not from council. It came from our citizens and, um, all of the key stakeholders. People have been putting their own private dollars into the downtown. We have a collective vision and we have an opportunity, um, to adopt that tonight. It is a vision. It is, every single element that's in here is something that we're going to, um, you know, if it affects things like parking meters, for example, that's not something that we're saying tonight. We're having parking meters. That would be a, a topic for discussion. Um, but it does provide a framework for people who have already made investments and people that we hope will continue to make investments in the downtown. And I'm, um, I've, we've approved an awful lot of plans on, at this, um, by city council. I'll think of West Bloomington Revitalization Project as one of them, where we had a unanimous support for that. There was a lot of city investment that, that went into, um, what we hope will become, you know, what West Bloomington will become. And we didn't have any problems with that. Um, and I, I, I have to say that I get baffled sometimes by what the concern is about this. We have a jewel. We have such a rich historic, um, assets in our buildings and, and a lot of, um, investment. And, and I think this plan does everything that we've done in the past and we hope to do in the future. It does it justice.
Thank you very much. Alderman Lauer and then Alderman Sage and Sterns.
Okay. Well, I know that there's gonna be a lot of disagreement with what I'm gonna say, but I have, uh, a fair amount of experience with this. I have beat this thing to death and combed through it and combed through other documentation as well. Um, I have, uh, a fair amount of, uh, time, uh, uh, spent on this. I had to prove it to myself. And, uh, I can, I can honestly say that there are a number of things, um, that are in contention here. Um, this is in concept and in application identical to the 2009 downtown plan. We have taken out some phraseology. We have taken out some, uh, language that, uh, would lead us to believe that it has been changed in, in application and in, uh, total overall concept. But I, I am here to, to, to say that I do not believe it has. Um, it does not eliminate the concept of the form-based code. It does not reg, uh, uh, eliminate regulation of zoning and land practices to affect and implement the form-based code outcomes uh, here in Bloomington. Um, I can, I can reference, uh, uh, verse in, in scripture here, page nine, 21, 36, 37, 38, 40, uh, zoning mentioned in, in page 23 and 18. It goes on and on. Um, it, page 41 and 41 go, uh, 40 and 41 go, uh, into depth on, on some form-based code concepts. Uh, pages 65 and 66 talk about a zoning overlay. It's not very well defined. Okay? Maybe if it had been, I wouldn't be here talking like this. But, um, it leads us to believe and be very distrustful of what it does lead to. Um, the bottom line here is, uh, zoning code overlays, uh, can be and have historically been very, very restrictive and expensive to implement. Okay? From, from my experience with a developer and with, uh, several builders, um, this does retard investment in our city. Um, overall, it may be good for, or it may be perceived to be good for downtown, but it, uh, we have to think of it in terms of the city as a whole. And, and in my perception, this is bad for Bloomington. Um, we need to step back and take a look at this and resist changes just to comply with national and international trends and fads. Okay? And I think that's really the impetus for where this plan is rooted. Okay? We are Bloomington and we will continue, regardless of whether we pass this plan or not, we will continue to be Bloomington. And we may have to come back and revise this. It may happen 15 years from now and it might happen next week. I'm not really sure. Um, it depends on the, the kickback and it depends on how long we're willing to accept the lack or the retardation of investment in our city. Um, a shift from, and this is, this is the, the overall concept that I take from this af, after studying it for actually several years. Uh, we're shifting from an independence in transport a, as a, as a parameter of this to government-controlled mass transit. Okay? Um, the, the tenet of this is to build the zone regulations, push alternate forms of, of transportation rather than cars. It's very auto, uh, negative. And, and Mayor, you and I spent hours on this particular item. Okay? Uh, we talk about street escape design, which I don't have a big problem with until we start to mandate things. Um, and, and, and these are all tenets of the form-based code. So street, streetscape design, tree placement, pervious pavers and alternate pavement materials. Um, and, and this is outlined in several other, uh, publications that are well known, uh, namely the Main Street, uh, Call for Investment, uh, talks about, uh, preparing and adopting form-based code. Um, and it talks with a lot of the same language almost to the verse. Okay? Uh, focuses on ultimate, uh, form of building while regulating zone management, building type standards. We're talking about setback from the, the right of way. Um, I actually have a little bit of, uh, uh, background talking with a constituent who went to great lengths and spent many tens of thousands of dollars on plans yet to be rejected and rejected and rejected again because he could not ma, meet the, the, uh, the form-based code, uh, as it currently sets, uh, uh, in our, uh, in our particular area. Uh, it goes on and on to talk about public parking regulation and placement, uh, maximizing and minimizing building height requirements, uh, entrance locations, minimum level of transparency in terms of windows, uh, roofline cap treatments, uh, master plan, uh, master planning, uh, communities and, and zoning districts. This is, this is tenement to, to, uh, the language that's in form-based code. Um, another one of the publication that, that, that goes in, in depth, uh, in this is McLean County Comprehensive Plan of 2009, uh, encouraging the adoption of form-based code zoning, uh, multimodal transportation options, um, which again is anti-independence and anti-auto. I think that's really all I've got to say on this subject tonight. I am, I am not, not in favor of this.
Appreciate it. The only, the only couple of comments that I would make is that, uh, for us, I, I think this, if this comes from the citizens and it comes from the stakeholders, if it just happens to be something that other people in the world are also doing, I don't necessarily think that that's necessarily a bad thing. But also to make it clear, we have to, nothing's gonna happen unless we approve it in the, in the long run anyway. This represents a year and some worth of public participation. People, as Karen had said, who've invested downtown. And frankly, we're not gonna be able to get people to invest, uh, from outsiders in our downtown if we don't have a plan. And I think that's one of the core reasons. That's the core reason why I support it. Do I like everything in it? No, I don't. But I do think that it represents what people have discussed. So if, for example, give you just one quick example, the Market Street Garage is an $11 million noose around our neck, depreciation noose around our neck. Now, it, the, the plan says something about putting the Y there. Well, the Y's probably not gonna go there, but it's something like that. And so that's part of why, again, it's at a thousand feet, these are the kinds of things that you can do. Um, anyway, I shouldn't say anymore because we're already kind of pushing in our time and I, uh, started by talking. I believe Alderman Sage, you're next, and then Alderwoman Sterns.
And probably two quick questions, Mayor. Um, the, the DBA made up of downtown business owners, property owners, if you will. Uh, and, and I, and I think I know the answer to this question, but I, but I think it, it's worth saying it again. Have they endorsed this revised plan? Has the DBA formally endorsed this revised plan?
I don't know that they formally. I think it's, it's safe to say, I mean, I can ask Tricia Stiller, um, and we have Carl Teichman in the back. Can you not? Yes. Okay.
Okay. So, so there is some evidence, right, that close to home, with the folks who, who have the roots, who, who have put the, the, the sweat equity, if you will, into their businesses and their properties downtown, have endorsed this plan. And, and so they, they certainly have a vested interest in making sure that, that their property rights and so forth are, are not, um, restricted. Okay? Um, the other one is just more procedural. Um, one of the questions that, that, that was asked was when was this put up on the city website for, um, review? And it was Wednesday, November 27th, which was the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. Um, and I'm gonna make the assumption that, that probably most folks who, who look for these kinds of things probably didn't see it till after the long holiday weekend. So that would have been Monday, December 2nd. And here we are voting on it December 9th. Um, is, is there any concern, um, maybe from other Aldermen or, or just procedurally or, or the principle of, of putting something out and just making it available, something of this, of this scope, of this magnitude, and, and just having it available for large-scale public review for, for just a week? Um, and, and again, that's, that's honestly meant to be a question, not a.
Sure, sure. Um, I don't, I, my understanding is that, uh, this has been out on the website. It's certainly been available in some form for quite a while. Um, David?
Certainly the, I think the DBA has had the former plan. Uh, I'd have to check with our staff as to if it's been in some other form. Mark, could you just, has it been out on our city website for any period of time prior to this 27th?
The 27th is a 2012.
Okay. Uh, but you gotta keep it, remember that back, the last time it was reviewed, um, and it went to the Planning Commission and the Council, there was a lot of exposure. And I'm sure availability of the plan back then, but that's about what, a month, a year? Year and a half, uh, ago. So, and then even a couple of years before that, back in 0910, again, there was a lot of availability. So it, as indicated, it hasn't changed all that much, uh, during those successive periods. But, uh, once it kind of got tabled, put on the side, I don't know that there's, there's any kind of continual, uh, access to it out there on the website other than if it was through the DBA.
Right. And, and frankly, you know, when I ran for mayor, I talked about it all the time in that context. I didn't carry it with me though, honestly. Uh, at least in the old form. But, um, do you have a follow-up?
No. Again, I'm not hearing anything. So I'm assuming that, that we're comfortable that it was out there for a week for, for review. So, um, I'm not sure I'm comfortable with that, but, but I'm also willing to hear other conversations. So thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Uh, Alderwoman Sterns and then Alderman Fruen. And then I will call for vote unless I have others. Yes.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I think that, you know, having been here when this came up before, uh, there was a very, very serious and long conversation. And several Aldermen expressed that they simply would not and did not support form-based code. Now, the public, I don't think really knows what form-based code is. But I assure you that it is a more restrictive zoning overlay and it is very, very important. Normal has adopted it, I believe, or pretty much adopted, you know, you can make a choice or something. But if you go north on norms, on Main Street, under the Viaduct and start to look to your left especially, you're going to see form-based code in quantity. Um, do you like it? I, I'm not, I'm not really all that fond of it. I don't think it's all that attractive necessarily or necessarily something that enhances anything. Um, it is very much in, it's very much in vogue. Downtowns have a lot of, um, trends. They're, they're trends. Uh, actually, form-based code is a lot like what we had some, you know, 80, 90, 100 years ago in traditional downtowns. We got rid of all that. We had a better way, you know? Now we see such things as cities who have developed downtown malls, you know, like closing streets, they're, they're reopening streets. Lots of trends. Um, and I know this is a popular plan. It's, it's perceived, I think somewhat, anyway, I think a lot of supporters here tonight, and I'm glad you are. I think it's perceived as you're for downtown. Um, this has, has nothing to do with that. It, it's a pretty book. It has a lot of pretty pictures. Um, I'm not a fan of endorsing anything that I don't plan to really support and see happen. Um, I don't think, I think it comes as a total shock to people such as a gentleman who spent quite a bit of time and effort actually forming an organization around this. Someone who was here tonight, a very, you know, substantial business owner. Um, so do I think that coming up a week ago on the web and all of a sudden, just like that, kind of a very quick, we're going to support this? No, I do not think that it got a second public vetting. I think it got one public vetting. And I think the council voted it down because of that public vetting. And now all of a sudden, yes, Mayor, you did talk about it during your election, but all of a sudden, here it is again. It, it's a pretty book. It's going on a picture. It's going on a shelf. It's five years old. A lot of the data, I don't think at all applies anymore. I think we're doing this to say that we did it. I'm not sure it's the right plan for downtown. It certainly is form-based code, no doubt about that. But it doesn't mean that I don't support planning, that I don't support downtown, Illinois Wesleyan, all the wonderful things that we have. I do support them. But I don't think this is the right plan. I don't think the timing, the data, anything else is right. I think we've changed a lot in five years. And no, 10 days or so on the website, no, I, I don't think that's fair. So I can't support this tonight. But, um, you know, I, I do support downtown and I think, um, that's about it. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Alderman Fruen and then Black and then we'll vote.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, another topic that we've been at a long time and so another situation where it's not a perfect world for all of us and we need to find something that we can move forward with. I think this downtown has been evolving for a long time and will continue to evolve for a long time. Uh, I'm very supportive of downtown efforts. We've got the energy downtown with our residents and our business owners. And we've got such a major investment with Coliseum and the BCPA and everything that we've done in between. And I think when we talk about wards and neighborhoods and community at large and all that, I think downtown is so critical to the community at large because what downtown is, it's, it's to the entire community. Um, I think we have to move forward with it. I think, uh, it's the right thing to do. Uh, I think we can evolve with it. And, uh, I just think that, um, at some point, we've been discussing this for many, many, many months. I don't know when we started, but at some point you have to get on the board and say, let's get something in place. We have to give some confidence to those that come downtown, whether you're a resident, you're a business owner, whether you want to invest in downtown. But up until now, we have not provided that confidence. I think this will make some effort to say, here's some direction that we think we're headed to. So I think supporting this is the right thing to do.
Last but not least, Alderman Black.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just kinda want to echo Alderman Fruen's comments there about, about direction. And, uh, I've actually taken a couple of phone calls about this, um, over the course of being an Alderman since May. And, and all of them, 100% have been, why haven't we passed this yet? What is the holdup? What is the delay? What, what are we holding up here for? Um, and I'm not saying that we should push things through, but at least we should have the discussion. And, you know, we can talk about how long it should be up on the website. And I think that, uh, you know, understand the holiday situation. Perhaps we could have gone a little bit longer, but at some point we need to have this discussion. And then the feedback overwhelmingly, uh, for me has been, um, this is what I want to see our downtown look like. I'd like to see the direction that we're going. And, you know, we've talked about economic development up here and, and we've talked about what we can do to ensure that our city continues to grow. Giving a direction, giving a, a purpose to what we're up to goes a long way in ensuring that we have a thriving community moving forward. Um, you know, I'm, I'm interested in this because I think it's not just looking at it on a short-term basis, looking at it on a long-term basis. Something that perhaps, you know, my kids could look at or even my grandkids, or heck, maybe I can even see it. Um, and that's the kind of thing that I, I'm looking for. And when, when we talk about attracting different types of businesses here, attracting different types of, of potential employees to come down here to live here, these are the types of things that they're looking for. These are the, the types of places that they're used to seeing. And I think that this is definitely a, a, a step in that direction. And I think it's, uh, it doesn't, I don't think it includes the form-based code in the, in the visceral sense that everybody's concerned about. I think it does provide us with the direction of what we want. So I, I wholeheartedly support it.
Just, uh, one last comment. I can tell you that when Chris Kuss and I were in Los Angeles, everybody that we talked to said, what have you got for millennials? That's what our clients want to know. And as we move forward, as State Farm's not growing anymore, that's one of the things they want to ask. And two people said some version of this, we've looked at what you guys have done in, uh, Normal, you know, smiling at Chris Kuss. What's up with you and downtown in Bloomington? And they could find this out by looking on the web. Right? And so it is absolutely critical. And I know Alderwoman Sterns, I know, I know you well. I know you didn't mean to be insulting. But I can tell you the, that the, the book, it's not just a pretty book. It's absolutely critical. And it's why the stakeholders, it's why the people who've invested their sweat equity in downtown. It's why this plan has so many legs five to seven years later. It still is viable. And it's essential for us to move forward. If we started backwards, it's, we haven't just had one, two, three. We've had dozens of public vettings of this plan over many, many, many years. And so, uh, that's why I think it is absolutely essential. Um, okay.
So Mayor, I get, I guess I get to respond.
Of course.
No insult intended, of course. It's a beautiful book. Um, it, I think some of the people whose buildings are missing in some of these pictures might, might have some opinions a little bit different. You know, they might say, gee, here's a nice picture of what we're proposing and. They might say, gee, here's a nice picture of what we're proposing, and my building isn't even there anymore. A lot of the pictures are, have complete and drastic changes in blocks. And again, I don't want to put my name on something because I do think it's very significant that I don't support the, you know, pretty much moving forward. We haven't even mentioned financing, but of course, we're at the end, you know, we're not in a financial position at the moment either. So that concerns me as well, but certainly no intention, you know? I think it's a beautiful book, and, well, it is a beautiful book, a lot of beautiful pictures. The DBA is great. Many, many, many downtown business owners, you know, frankly, are not members of the DBA. And I've heard from some of them, they're deeply concerned and had no idea, because we vetted this before, and maybe, I don't know if you attended the meeting, but it was strongly discussed by a lot of stakeholders, and the Council didn't pass it. Nothing really has changed, except a few of the phrases in the book, so, but thank you very much.
Okay. We're going to go ahead and start, oh, there we go, start vote. The motion passes 7 to 2, Madam Clerk.
Your nays are Alderman Lauer and Sterns.
Okay. Moving right along to item 8D, is a downtown hotel feasibility study, and we have 15 minutes allocated to this. I'll try to be a little bit lenient on that, since there may be more than a few of you who want to speak. One of the things I have to say is, I think, and I do agree with many people's concern, we do a lot of studies, and we do lots of things. And if this one weren't essential, I certainly wouldn't have worked with the city manager on this. One of the things that I think we could do, if we waited, you know, if we had six months to a year, we probably could get Illinois Westland, Illinois State University, to do a decent job of giving us some idea of an economic feasibility. The problem with that is, is nobody will believe us. And that is outside of the area, out of this area, even if the numbers are good, they'll think it's internally, they're not going to believe us. So initially, my thought was, frankly, my initial reaction was, why do we need a hotel feasibility study? And then I talked to mayors in other places and other people who basically gave me uniformly the same thought. If you're serious, you want to get a hotel across from the Coliseum to reduce your renting, you want to create more jobs, you want to have a new anchor in downtown, you need to have some market analysis that demonstrates the themes that you find. And so, anyway, that's the only comment that I will make on this, and I will see if there is a motion to approve.
The move?
Moved by Alderwoman, excuse me, Alderwoman McDate is her second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Fazini. And who'd like to speak to this, and I'll note your names. Alderman Lauer, and Fruen, and Sterns. We'll start with Alderman Lauer.
Well, Mayor, again, you're setting a precedence here, and I really think it's inappropriate. Let me ask a question here. Have you posed the question for private investment for this study, for neighbors in the area?
I didn't.
Yes. Have you asked of anyone in the district or in the area if they would like to combine, you know, and invest in the neighborhood? I'm hearing from some of my constituents that there might have been private money out there to pay for this.
There are any number of people I've had conversations with, well over a dozen, about a hotel across from the Coliseum, right? Nobody has stepped up to the plate to go beyond the first level of discussion, partly because they wanted, they also want to do a market analysis, so they want to know what's going on.
I'm not in favor of, again, just using a blanket premise that we might be able to use a hotel down there. I mean, I've got a developer that's got plans for one on the south side, and he hasn't come to the city and asked, he didn't even come to me and ask for funding for a study. He's got his own plans for a study.
Right.
And that's part of his business plan.
In the?
And I would think that anybody that is, that is, you know, with any moxie and any experience in business is going to want their own study in the first place.
They may want that, to check it, but in other, for us to go and really be serious about it, we have to, that not all locations are equal to a community. Like, for example, if we have Lakewood Plaza or Colonial Plaza, if they are shaky, we can't let a plaza go under, we have to do everything we can, because they're magnets for gang activity, there are problems. Investment in older neighborhoods, we might value, investment in our downtown, we certainly, most communities do value. So it's not, all locations aren't the same. But anyway, I don't-
I'm certainly not opposed to spending money where it needs to be spent and spending it wisely. I just question, it seems like every week we come back to the table and ask for another study for the area down there. And I'm beginning to wonder where the end is. And quite frankly, I'm questioned on a daily basis by my constituents where the end is. So I'm proceeding with extreme caution here, sir.
Sure. Thank you. I believe, let's see, Alderman Fruen, and then Alderwoman Sterns.
Just a quick comment. My personal opinion is I think it's a little bit ahead of its time. I'd like to see the downtown plan that we just implemented, get that a chance to provide some spark. I think we also need some council discussion about what our vision is of that whole area to include front and center, Commerce Bank and Elks and Panograph and that whole area. I think it's a bigger issue, the Warehouse District. I think we need a little more council discussion. I don't see there's a lot of drive or a lot of interest for a hotel right now. So I just, I think the time is just premature, so I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Alderwoman Sterns.
Thank you. A hotel across from the Coliseum, very, an idea that is certainly not new, it's been, it's been vetted throughout the country in many, many cities. It's an extremely popular concept. When I was first kind of approached, what about a hotel? Great, hotel, fantastic, across from the Coliseum, wonderful, with private money. And this $30,000, I think, is a start down a road that, the city's gone down a lot of roads, and some of them have not been necessarily, have not worked out for the taxpayers, one of which we all know very well, I don't even have to say the name of it, but there were studies after studies, and they predicted something would pay for itself, there would be no public money, okay? And I didn't have the time today to get into my file cabinet, but I have a lot of the articles and a lot of the information about those studies. Today, the taxpayers of Bloomington are on the hook. Now, some feel that's a good thing, and, you know, I certainly haven't advocated closing it or selling it. I mean, I don't think that's real at all. But the taxpayers are on the hook right now for at least $2 million a year, and conceivably quite a bit more operating losses and such. This hotel idea, all I need to say, please look for the Wall Street Journal article, downtown hotels, boon or boondoggle? And let me say, Milwaukee is on the hook for $260 million in industrial bonds for their taxpayers, and because their hotel, the Renaissance, downtown St. Louis on the river, foreclosed in '09. I won't belabor this. The Sheraton Myrtle Beach, $64 million in public money foreclosed. Milwaukee's, one of theirs, Owensboro, Kentucky, St. Louis, Missouri, Baltimore, Myrtle Beach, there's a great site, Myrtle Beach, on the ocean, foreclosed, foreclosed. In fact, they had a sale where they invited the public in to buy the soap dishes and what have you. So I did a little bit of research, and no, I do not support any public money. In fact, when you mess with the laws of supply and demand, in other words, you create, we need this because we need it, you are embarking on a process of interfering in the local economy, you are definitely taking away from other hotels, and that's been seen in communities, hotels, other hotels have closed. So I did a little homework, a little research, and that's just the tip of the iceberg. I do not support public money for a hotel downtown or anywhere else. Thank you.
Just want to make a clarification, that is, if you have a city that is usually $50,000 or above, and we qualify, and you do not have a downtown hotel, that is, it's not one that exists, they, having a downtown hotel adjacent to something like Convention Center Coliseum usually helps the other, then I'll have to disagree. Maybe in the articles you've read, but at least anything that I've heard, that-
Even the Fitch analyst talked about, you do it, city, and you'll be downgraded. I've got that quote, too.
Well, I'm not talking about going into business, if you're talking to people giving $65 million as different story.
Owensboro, Kentucky, didn't have a downtown hotel. Lots of these cities were small cities, Enid, Oklahoma, on and on and on, and they're by convention centers. The concept is great, and our study's going to tell us what we want to hear.
If it's so bad, then I suppose then the analysis will tell us. Alderman Fazini?
Thank you. I think we're talking about a study for a hotel and convention center, is that not correct?
It's a hotel which could conceivably, if an investor wanted to do that, that would be necessary.
And I would guess with my experience in financing hotels, that this one would have a convention center, because it would make perfect sense to have a convention center right across the street from a place that people will go to. I didn't go very far to look at other ones, but I look just to the north, and I see a downtown hotel that's doing really well, so.
Actually, they're building a second one because they have overflow. In fact, when I called Chris Kuss, when I was running over a year ago, and frankly, he said to me, are you kidding? If you people in Bloomington would just do something, both boats will float. So he thought not only would it not be competition to anything in Uptown Normal, that it would feed both. And he had given me quite a bit of articles to, that kind of support some of this. But anyway, I'm sorry, Rob.
I don't see anyone else, so I'll call for the question.
Okay. All right. Oh, sorry. The motion carries 6 to 3, Madam Clerk.
Your nays are Alderman Lauer, Sterns, and Fruen.
Okay. Moving right on to the mayor's, actually, city manager, you're supposed to be on here, aren't you?
Supposed to be. I think it's been dropped the last couple of times, but-
At least the version I have doesn't have you on. Okay, so I will, since I skipped over it the last, I started the city manager and I said, oh, yes, Mayor, you have some questions or concerns?
I don't have anything to report tonight, Mayor, other than what's already been provided to the Council.
Okay. What I want to do, first of all, is thank my distinguished partner in frigid crime, Alderman Sage, for coming out on a really, really, really cold Christmas Day, and we went from Kingsley Junior High School all the way to downtown Bloomington. There weren't that many takers, and even some of the kids who were out there were all bundled up, they could barely grab the candy, and I need to thank Normal, because they gave us the candy, because we basically just, we just came out there in our golf cart. And, but we did give Chris Kuss and I think Alderman McCarthy a little bit of a ride where there was a long stretch. But anyway, thank you so much, David. Actually, there was a point where I looked, we were kind of having fun, looked like we were in a bad episode of Caddyshack or something, as we were driving it back. Anyway, thank you so much, and I know that there's definitely some, there've been some differences of opinions on obviously solid waste and downtown, but to a large degree, the Council tonight has, and we'll see, you know, for better and worse, perhaps as we move forward, we've had issues that have been languishing for years, and the Council deserves a lot of credit for that. This evening, we have a solid waste plan, begin to close the gap, we have a downtown plan, and we will move forward. And at least at that, I congratulate all of us, and for honest, open, robust debate, it's what democracy's about. Thank you. And I will ask if there are aldermen who want to make comments. Let me write you down. And, oh, yes, I'm sorry, we do meet next week, and that, if you could just give me 30 seconds. We are also in the process, something quite big, I suppose, of revamping and rewriting the downtown liquor code. We had a public hearing last week, and I think we are very close. Tomorrow, we have a liquor commission meeting, 4 o'clock here. If that passes the liquor commission, it will be brought to the Council on the 16th. And we do meet, one week from today, we won't be meeting on the 23rd. So Alderwoman Sterns, anyone else? Alderwoman Sterns.
Great. I'll by myself. Yeah, congratulations on doing the Christmas parade, I'm sorry I missed it. But anyway, speaking of Christmas, of going twice, will there be a Christmas tree? I was just at another city lighting ceremony, beautiful ceremony, lovely, sort of for the city, you know, and I just wondered again, because I grew up here and remember the beautiful trees we always had. Somebody told me we had a nativity, I guess we did, I know we're not doing that.
I was just informed that we have one downstairs.
Are we bringing it up?
I know.
No, we're not. Are we leaving it downstairs? Is it back by the parking lot?
There's probably a half a dozen Christmas trees in various offices, a lot of Christmas decorations, so, you know, there's quite a bit that employees have put together, so.
No, no special tree. Okay. Thank you.
I'm not sure what you mean, special tree.
Well, if the Council wants one, let's work on that duty for next year.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Lauer.
Well, I'd not only like to have a Christmas tree, but I'd actually like to have a prayer and a little bit of a Christmas tree lighting celebration, sir. And that was brought to my attention by Mayor Smart, former Mayor Smart, who had a long conversation with me, and he posed it this way. He brought to mind, in our national political arena, that there was a statement made by a certain leader that we are no longer a Christian nation. And he asked me, are we a Christian community? And I would have to agree with him that I believe that Bloomington is a Christian community, and I would certainly support that ideology. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Alderman McDate, second by Alderman Schmidt, all in favor, signify by saying aye. We're adjourned. Thanks.